While we're waiting for Brian to show up, those that are attending at this point. This is the subcommittee from the zoning board, basically, who is been working with the Crescent Street project in its design process, basically. This, just to let everybody know, this will be on tomorrow's agenda with the zoning board and be presented to the zoning board tomorrow, so. That's will be the time when public will have an opportunity to say what they want during the zoning board meeting. So at the moment, I'm going to close the door, hold on. So anyways, that public discussion will happen tomorrow. I think this is the first item on the agenda, maybe, for tomorrow. Yes, it's the first item on the agenda, so nobody has to worry about getting sleep for tomorrow. There he is.
I made it.
Yeah, that's nice. Are you out of breath?
No, okay, I've just been one of those days.
Okay.
After a holiday weekend, we all know what that's like.
Oh, yeah, alright. So since, I guess, everybody's here that's gonna be here.
Yep.
I'm gonna read.
Is Ezra coming or no, Jim?
I have not heard, although I did see, I thought I saw something that indicated he had her on his schedule.
Yes.
But it is now.
He's not looking to get in.
It's five minutes after the time.
Okay.
I gave you a little leeway, but I'm not gonna give him any.
Okay.
Alright, so I'm gonna read this since Amy's, I don't want Amy to to drive off the road at this point. Consistent with the governor's order, well, wait a minute, first off, this is a notice of the meeting of Board of Appeals, Working Group Subcommittee, October 12th, 2021. Meeting starts at 5:30. Consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and/or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link, and it gives it in the agenda. If you do not have a camera or a microphone on your computer, you may use the following in number 1301-715-85992, meeting ID 89768346974, password 734626. Please use only dial-in or computer and not both, as audio feedback will affect the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. So where we left off last time, basically, we went through the architecture of the building in which the large chunk of the fourth floor disappeared, and a replanning of that fourth floor level took place. And at the time, this group, when I say this group, the subcommittee basically wanted to see how the front of this building would be work, would work with landscape. And since then, we have a landscape plan of this, and so most of this meeting probably will be taken up with how that affects this building. There is other material, basically, that could be shown is, which will also be shown tomorrow night as well, so I'm gonna leave this, at this point, up to Peter, I assume. Peter, are you gonna show the stuff?
We, we're actually gonna have Steve show it, he has it on his computer, but we, and Jim, I would think, will show the landscaping, is that correct, Jim?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I can share my screen to show the landscape plan if needed.
So should we just start with that? Jim McVane, is that the best thing?
Yeah, so who's gonna, who have I gotta share the screen with?
James Emanuel.
Okay. So James, you got co-host.
Okay. If I can get this up. Is everybody able to see the landscape plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Blow it up a little bit?
Yeah.
Particularly towards the front.
Okay.
There you go.
So I believe since the last meeting, the main revision, the most prominent revision anyway, is along Crescent Street. And as you may recall from the building elevation, we've got a high elevation here, and the Crescent Street slips down, and that created an extended or larger or more exposed foundation from, from here down to this point where we have the driveway coming through here. So a lot of the foundation material we're showing here, and what we've done now to address this through the landscape plan is to introduce some stone retaining walls. First one would be down near the corner of the building, so here we are at the drive entrance at Crescent Street and the driveway into the, into the garage level, and we would take our, what we call a wing wall coming off the building and wrapping out toward the sidewalk and around, and this will create an elevated terrace, this wall being about three feet high. So the land here will be three feet lower at the elevation with the curving and the roadway. Then we step up three feet into this area here, which will include this, a weeping flowering tree and some shrubs, we can go through specifics on those, but some landscape shrubbery and plantings in this area here. And these spaces at about eight or nine feet wide each, you can see that that would be about eighteen feet, twenty feet to the next landscape terraced wall, so really creating, like I said, two steps of terraces here, another three foot high retaining wall to create a flat area, a flatter area up here, which we are now putting landscape plantings in this area. And these will be on the upper elevation, so from this level here to this level here will be a little over six feet higher, which makes that front elevation across the entire frontage of the building appear more, you might think it was more level as you look at it across the front, and then stepping down rather than just have a slope across the front. And we're providing a lot of greenery across this front elevation now as well too, so all this will be shrubbery and plantings, including viburnum and inkberry and spruce, a mix of evergreen deciduous and some flowering trees, and then a little kind of ribbon of grass across the front. Rick had done the grading plan to show how the topography will merge into these walls and create the step down three feet, and then the step down three feet here, plus perhaps a little bit of slope in between these two levels to allow us to terrace this rather than just have it as a as a angled slope with an increasingly exposed foundation plane off to the side here. And then as we go across the frontage, we just sort of beefed up or increased the amount of shrubbery. In this case, we've, we've added these ornamental grasses that will grow across the front porch of the building, the entrance is still at the same location. And we've got various shrub plantings along the street scape as well too, so up the side of native shrubs, bayberry and clothra. And then along the property line here, there's a walkway to enter the building at a doorway, which you'll see on the architectural plans and doorway there, with the shrubs along the, along the side of the, the property line here. The rest of the plan remains unchanged with the vegetation, grassy area where the subsurface infiltration systems are, drive entrance with subsurface infiltration in the same locations, but I think the, the, the big conversation that we were looking, or big discussions really, how do we treat the front elevation here, and that's what we're looking to do, a series of terraces with stone walls and landscape plantings.
Um, Peter? What's the, what is the elevation of that right-hand lower corner in relationship to the entry? How many feet up of exposed foundation do we have?
I mean, I think at one point, we had about eight feet there. So what do we have now, Jim Emanuel, left when this, when this wall goes in and then you do the?
So Rick and I were speaking about this, we were looking at that, and now it's going to be level with the elevation that comes across the porch, it's front porch here, so this stone wall brings us up to that same elevation carrying across all the way. So I believe that we've got a three-foot wall and then another three-foot wall with, with a little, with a little bit of slope in between those, but, but essentially that brings us to, if there's an eight or 10-foot grade change floor to floor, we've got that covered between the ramp elevation that brings us to the floor elevation here and the drop-off from there, it's about six feet difference from here to the street scape here, and then maybe another two feet up onto this elevation or so. So we really achieve it with the two walls, and that puts us where we want to be so that we've got a, a flat plane more or less here, and then a stepped drop, and then another plane coming down here, and then a step so that it's kind of organizes that elevation rather than just having it slope off like it was previously.
So what could we, it sounds like we are somewhere between eighteen inches and two feet of, of stone foundation exposed, does that seem logical?
Yeah, I think it's probably about eighteen inches along, along this area here. I don't have the specific floor elevation on that, but that would be in the, in the range, about eighteen inches from here to the, to the finish non-stone veneer foundation of the building, we'd be looking about eight, about eighteen inches of that.
So, so on the front entry, at the front air, air, run to here where you start your grasses, how much exposure do you think is there at that point? Because I'm wondering whether they should be shrubs or whether they should be grasses, particularly during winter.
Yeah, this again is about eighteen inches, and typically when we have a stone or some kind of ornamental, I mean, concrete foundation might be a little bit different, but we've only got a width there of, to the property line of about two and a half feet. So what I wanted to do is put something in there that would tolerate some snow removal if need be on the sidewalk. But for the bulk of the season, give something that is going to be lush, easy to care for and, and create kind of a interesting character when that frontage, it won't completely obscure the foundation, but it will, it will, I think, create a nice looking kind of, you know, sort of a grassy, or I, I think you're familiar with the way it was, you know, a row of ornamental grasses might look along the front of a porch or one of the foundation, it's a fairly simple and clean line look. And the only time there wouldn't be anything there would be after the winter when they get cut back and they're growing in the spring, and typically we would combine that in a, in a management plan, we would combine that probably seasonal plantings, early spring plantings for the one season where those plants aren't up. But beyond that, there'll be in foliage for, for the rest of the time.
What do we, I don't remember at this point, I just opened my other computer, but I don't see that I have what I'm looking for. Street trees. What's on the street these days? It seems to me there are some street trees on the street. Not in this particular area, but up and down the street in different areas of it, and this is sort of like a blank area, I believe, but I, I don't remember. So the question is, should we have, should we putting, should we be putting some street trees in?
I think we could put street trees, and I think there, I believe there actually is one street tree that's currently there, although the condition is not that great. We could look at that, there are overhead wires in the area. So the trees would have to be of a certain type that would interfere with that, and because of the proximity of the building to the property line, we wouldn't want them to get too wide, so we'd have to have a narrow type of tree as well.
Yeah, I don't, I, I kind of don't remember where the wiring is either. I can see a telephone, it looks like a telephone pole in, in one of your drawings there on your drawing, but I'm not sure whether it's a fire hydrant or a telephone pole. So I was, I was wondering whether we needed a second, a third step, but I, by what you're saying, basically, really, two steps would, would do this. Because I, I don't like, my comment I made last time was that it was just too much lance of foundation exposure, basically, and we'd better to soften it and bring the grade up to it, basically, to fill in like the rest of the street has, at this point, so I think you've done that.
That's correct, we did, we did look at whether we wanted two or three, and when Rick and I reviewed the grading, we determined two would get the job done.
Okay. Um, Amy?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, so I don't see, and it could just be because I'm looking at it on my phone, is there an irrigation system?
We always, on Wakefield projects, we always, I'm gonna do this. Zoom in just as, as part of the permitting process, if you can see this note right here, all landscape areas to be irrigated, so. Yes.
Oh, I see it now, yep. Okay, thank you, and then, um, yeah, I was thinking the same, along the same lines as Jim about the street trees, I don't, I don't think there are any there right now, but if that's something that you guys look at, I know a question Chip will ask, is the caliber of those trees? So I'm not sure if that's something that you are gonna look at, or?
Right now, we have a flowering tree, which is which is proposed in this area here, there is currently a street tree. I think there's one street tree, let me pull over what is showing on. Bring this over, can you see this right now? Is that, is that view sharing on screen?
Same screen that you had.
That's the same. Stop sharing, Jim, then share what you want.
Okay. Well, just suffice to say, there's a normally maple that's right about here.
That's right, I just sent you the link, Jim, you can open that, it will show you on your email.
Yeah, that's the, did it from the Bing app, so I can.
Look at the street scape up in the top left corner, we open it.
Yeah.
Problem is, I can't open email on this one.
No, I sent it to Jim Emanuel, Jim, stop sharing.
Alright.
Just let me stop this and I'll pull this up. And now we'll share again.
I just sent it to Jim Emanuel.
Hold on a minute, I'll show you the.
There you go.
So this is the tree that's currently there right now.
And there's wires, so there's wires on both sides.
You can see the wire, utility poles, it's correct. So that's where we're, that's what we're looking at, I think, on the other image that I had.
Hey, Rick, Rick, are you there?
Yeah, I am.
So one of the things that we've, we're gonna, the, the light department is gonna require a ten-foot clearance from those wires, or actually, what is it now, Jim? Fourteen feet?
Fourteen, they want ten feet and a four-foot lift.
Okay, yeah, make sure you knew that with those wires.
Yeah.
These are the wires.
Is that gonna be in the way of construction?
No. No.
Okay.
Not even gonna be in the way of maintenance, basically.
Hey, what, that's not, that's not the prettiest street tree, I'll tell you that.
No, I mean, I think we should, I think we should replace it, and maybe there's two on that, two in front of the building, maybe there's three, I don't know, we have to look at, and you got this telephone pole and a fire hydrant there as well, so there's limit, there's other limitations on the street.
Correct.
But I think we ought to look at some, at least two street trees if we can get them. And how that affects everything.
We can, we can put a condition in requiring us to provide them as long as.
I think it'll help soften it.
As long as it's approved by the town, because we, we don't have a right to.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, but we've done it before, basically.
Although, you know, through 40B, you got, your board might have the right to do that.
Yeah.
Because you supersede everybody.
Jim Emanuel, can you go back to the, to the, your plan for a second?
Sure.
Please, thanks.
Can you see that?
Yep, thank you, and I don't know if we've talked about this already about where the transformer is gonna go, but I just want to make sure that fit in with landscaping.
Good point.
That's, that was on my list too, thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Rick, any idea what we're looking at for power?
It's probably, it's gonna be a ground mounted transformer for sure, I believe. Just looking it up right now, if you can, a second. I don't think we've designated a location yet. But it's probably gonna end up wanting to be screened in that front right corner somewhere.
In this area.
Where the landscaping is.
Yes.
Well.
Is there one back in that far, the back far right corner where the deliveries would go?
They're probably, right now, there isn't, but there's no reason why we couldn't push that wall back another couple of feet and be able to stick it back in there if the power company would allow us to do it.
Well, as long as they can get access to it, they'll allow it, it's just a matter of who's paying for the primer and the secondary.
Yeah, I mean, they have full access to it, they'd have their ten feet clear in front of it without a problem. You know, I, I'm sure the, I, I think what I'm sensing is the, the desires to not put it in the front here and screen it.
Aren't you gonna have problems up front with the topography, Rick?
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't it be hard to put it in the front there with the way the topography is?
Well, no, because we're terracing it, and what's driving the terrace locations is the back of sidewalk grades, we're matching the back of sidewalk grades. So, you know, it would fit in there, but it would have, the problem is, by the time you got your five-foot separation from the building, it'd be up pretty close, and as much as you'd try to screen it, it'd be difficult to screen.
Yeah, you'd be, you'd be, you'd be losing some of your planting, basically. So if we could get it at the end of the drive, that would be perfect, and it would be closer to your electric service in the building as well.
It would, yeah, we can reach out to National Grid and get a work order, as you know, National Grid won't.
No, it's not National Grid.
I'm sorry, it's Wakefield Electric, right? Yes, we can reach out to them pretty easily then.
Yeah, watch, watch it, they'll put it right on your front porch.
I know.
We've had that. Jim Emanuel, the, and maybe Peter, the upper left-hand corner on Crescent Hill where there's that little driveway in, the, it appear, is, is there any retaining wall there? Because it seems like in the existing circumstances, a retaining wall at the abutting house, and then it drops down using the building that's currently there. It almost seems like there should be another retaining wall at that property edge. But I, I haven't, I went back looking for a grading plan, and I couldn't find one. Whether it's ones that exist or not, I, I just don't have a copy of it.
So Jim, that, that's actually a really good question, you might recall earlier plans of ours did have a retaining wall up there, and what we've done in the, in the latest drawings is we're gonna eliminate that retaining wall and fill it straight across level to the building, and the building will act as a retaining wall.
So the foundation of the building would be the retaining wall?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, alright.
And that way there, that way there, it kind of, it creates, it's gonna create, you know, an extra twelve feet that'll be the same elevation as the yard area to the north, so it won't be like there's a retaining wall in their face on the property line, it'll.
Yeah.
Open it up a little bit there.
Yeah, 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 that, that would actually, yeah, be pretty flat at that area, because they're parking, they're parking there on the other side of that line, and so it would just sort of look the same or similar anyway.
Because you're right, that's pretty high back there, that's like elevation 123.
Yeah. So.
Jim, hold on, if I could just reference something, so our bylaw has a provision for traffic visibility at driveways and corners. And I'm gonna read it, and let's just make sure that what we're proposing works, it says, a fence, hedge, wall, wall, sign or other structure or vegetation may be maintained on any lot provided that in the front yard area, no such structure vegetation shall be over two and a half feet in height above the adjacent ground within five feet of the front lot line unless it can be shown that such vegetation or structure will not restrict visibility in such a way as to hinder the safe entry or exit of vehicles from any driveway to the street or restrict visibility at the corner of two streets. So do these walls that we're proposing create any sight distance issues, Rick?
No, we, we can evaluate that, but I don't think it does, because like I said, we never exceeded the sidewalk grade.
Was it over two and a half feet out there?
It's, well, three and a half feet, but the problem is, is the, is the, is the street drops at a quicker rate than that.
I mean, if you're come, if you're coming out to take a left, I don't see, you know, you know, it's not, you're gonna have sight distance. If you're coming out to take a right, you don't have to worry about that wall, right?
What's the, what's the distance from the street you were reading there?
Five feet.
Yeah, it says.
From the street or is it from the sidewalk? Because of that, we have a grass strip and a sidewalk, yeah.
Two and a half feet in height above the adjacent ground within five feet of the front lot line.
Okay. Yeah, and, and here we have, you know, we have a, a much larger distance than normal from the lot line to the gutter line of the street.
Yeah.
So you'll be pulled out past that retaining wall when the nose of your car is at the gutter line of the street that you'd be looking right past, and we can demonstrate that, that's easy enough to do.
So I mean, basically, you can do it, but we just need to be comfortable that it's not gonna restrict visibility to hinder safety.
Well, I would worry a little bit about pedestrians, but in the past, where pedestrians have been basically an issue, we've usually had some sort of blinker or something like that, or horn or whatever. So when you drive out, a pedestrian realizes that something's coming out. It's a different issue when it's a car, basically, can get far enough out to see a car.
Yep. I think that's a very good point, we could put, you know, on top of one of those walls, a, a pretty modest, and we've, we've done them in a lot of other projects, we try to stay away from the horns and the noise, because that gets to be annoying to the neighborhood. But just a little flash and beaking that says caution vehicle exiting, it flashes, you know, for, you know, a minute once they, once they go through the garage door, so it gives them enough time, then it shuts off.
On the wall?
Yeah, you'd put it right on the wall, so a pedestrian walking down the sidewalk would know that a car is about to come out of the driveway. Which may not be a bad idea anyways, because it, because as we all know, Crescent Street's got pretty extreme topography to it.
Well, I mean, let's, let's talk about this, is, is it worth, Jim Emanuel, can we pull that wall back a little bit?
We, we could pull the wall back.
I mean, you know.
What, what is the distance in that bylaw, Brian, was it five feet or so?
Well, we, the, the, it's a mandatory requirement of the bylaw unless it's determined that it's not a safety issue. So that's why I'm asking, so the bylaw is basically saying you could do, you know, it kind of gives you a guideline, but if it's, if you, if we can be comfortable, it's not a safety issue, you don't have to comply with that.
Yeah, we can, because by the time you get, Brian, by the time you get to where the curve of the wall starts, that wall is less than two feet tall. It's only the full three feet back where the wall meets the building.
Okay, so, so it can't be over two and a half feet, five feet from the property line, so you think.
And it's not.
Okay, then we need to.
I'll tell you right now, it's not, we can, we can, we can give some more data, so I'm just looking at the grading plan now, it's not.
And, and on the, on the Crescent Hill side, Jim Emanuel, the, the shrubs that you have proposed on, near the garage door in the street corner, what are the height of those?
These shrubs here will be in the, well, it depends, they give four to six feet. So if we need to do smaller shrubs in this location, we could certainly do that.
I think we, I think we might need to, because you, you're not gonna want to block people's visibility coming out of the garage, right?
Yeah, but this is so close to the building, Brian, I don't think it really will.
No, because you get all this.
It's gonna be, look, I mean, if you look, if you draw the site triangle, it, it's gonna be way outside of it.
Out, out on Crescent Hill, Rick?
Yes, yes.
All right, as long as you're comfortable with it. I just wanted to raise that.
Yeah, if that, if, if that becomes an issue for them, we can, we can create a sight distance drawing that, that shows that with the appropriate dimensions on there.
It, it would appear the only ones that would be of a problem would be the uphill shrubs. Because you, that's the side the car comes out of. Uh, you have plenty of view angle basically going down the street, even where the shrubs are there. It's in, and people driving in, it's, it's not the problem driving in, it's driving out. So we'll just have to pay attention on these things.
These are also further away from the garage entrance, but if, you know. I, I guess we could look at that if we, if we really wanna put some lower shrubs just to, just to, um. Take that with caution. We certainly can swap in some lower shoves that stay in that three foot range or, or less.
I mean, if you imagine a car pulling out of there, they're not looking down parallel to the building. They're looking kinda diagonally onto the street. They're gonna be out, those aren't even gonna impact the view.
These shrubs here.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, yeah, I mean, we can show the side trail because it's really coming across here. It's.
Exactly, just like you said, that's right.
At the point of where the vehicle is, so.
Alright, so, um. Do we have, uh, two things that I think for Wednesday? Is in the package that we received. Um, on Friday. There was no layout of the parking in the garage. Um, I, I don't know that anything's changed, but I would make sure that in the presentation for Wednesday. There is a parking layout. For the garage levels. So the board can see where everything's at and in current, with the, within the current layout.
Yeah, that, nothing's changed, Rick, right?
No, nothing's changed.
Yeah.
So let's, but let's make sure that we have it.
You got it.
Alright. Um, the other thing is, like I said earlier, I don't have a grading plan. And I don't know, uh, it's certainly some of what's shown right here is changing the grading, but. Did we have a grading plan submitted earlier? Cause I don't have it. I don't have a digital copy of a grading plan.
Rick?
Uh, yeah, we, we can, we can certainly submit. I think we're trying to keep this simple and, and keep it to the architecturals. But we're happy to, um, I, I think. Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, what our plan was is to make sure we're on the right track with the architecturals and then provide. The grading drainage utilities and all that stuff, but we can, we're certainly prepared to provide one, um, if it's appropriate to do it now.
Yeah, I think our goal tomorrow night, Jim, and we're, and we're hoping, you know, quite candidly to get your support and Amy's support is. You know, representing this is kind of like, um, kind of an olive branch plan, um. That, you know, basically the board said go back and work on the massing on the top floor. Um, you know. And we think we've done that and, um, we've had to lose two units and we've done so that we don't lose parking. Um, so we're gaining more parking compared to what, what it was and. And we're looking, you know, we're looking kind of as Ezra had said at the last meeting for the board to say. You know, if you change to this plan, because you know, tomorrow night, this is really not a formal submittal. It's kinda like, hey, we wanna know if this plan does it. From an architectural standpoint, because if it does, then we're willing to commit to start going to the materials and. And commit to this landscaping type plan that you've asked for. And, and to, and, and, you know, and to, and to basically say now, you know, it's not, we've, we've got. A base plan. Now let's put the finishing touches on this. That's what we're looking for a commitment from the board. Um, you know, not with all due respect, hey, you're getting there, you're getting, no, th- you know, this is, we think we're already there at forty-two units. This is kinda like. We're looking to like say, yeah, this works. Submit this as a formal modification with forty units. And let's get all your grading and landscaping. Let's start talking materials because we're, in all the bells and whistles with conditions because we're running out of time.
I don't, I don't disagree with that. And, and you're right, and it may just complicate things in, in an area that doesn't need to get conca- complicated yet. So.
So I mean, you know, as part of this meeting, you know, you guys, you and Amy have worked incredibly hard on this. This is probably like our. Six subcommittee meeting.
Yeah, it's like.
You know, and, you know, you've certainly transformed this project as part of this process with. Everything, I mean, and, you know, with the commitment to visitor parking, with the, um, the increased parking ratio. Um, with, you know, all the architectural changes, the massing now with dealing with landscaping. You guys, you've transformed the whole thing. So. You know, I've gotta ask you, because we're part of this process. You guys, will you guys support this tomorrow night with the board and, and advocate for this to move forward? I know that's a tough question, but it's, it's a question we need to know, because we're trying to move, we're trying to advance this and. You know, i- it's gonna be difficult if we've worked out on this and you get to the board and say, well, you know, it's, it's kind of okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm quite frankly, I'm supportive of it. Um, I'd like to hear the rest of, I mean, I can't look at every corner of this thing and understand where pe- different people are coming from. So of course I wanna hear from my other board members as well, but. Um, y- you're absolutely correct. I mean, we've had six or eight meetings, basically honing this in one way or another. And at the last meeting, I thought it best basically that we bring, uh, Jim Emmanuel's. Concept to this so that we can see at least how this thing sits on the site. And how it, how it would work. So, you know, I, unless someone throws something back at me that makes me double think, I'm. I'm sort of, I'm, I'm pretty much there, uh, from my perspective. Is, is a concept anyway.
How do you feel, Amy?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I feel like I'm at the point where I'm, I'm okay with showing this to the board, um. Just to see kind of what their feedback is. If there's something like Jim said, if there's something we missed or something that they bring up, it would be good to have. The perspective of everybody. Um, I, I'm okay with it going to them right now.
Good.
And then just kinda see where the conversation goes.
I think I'm a little more, I'm a little, I'm a little more convinced than maybe Amy is at this point, but I. That doesn't leave open, that leaves me open to, um, is this something I have, something we haven't thought of or worked through?
Oh, no, I mean, I'm open to that.
Your comment just basically about bringing up the view angles, basically, I hadn't even thought of it. But you're absolutely right. So is there something else hang out there that doesn't really affect the design? It just affects basically how we deal with the design. And maybe we need to have a different solution somewhere or something like that. But as far as, as far as the bigger picture. You know, I, I'm, I'm pretty much there. I don't, I don't see. Where, um, you can start to strip this thing back any further, in my opinion.
Oh, no, I agree with you on that. Yeah. No, I think that where the building is at, am I in love with this project? Everybody knows I'm not, so I'm not hiding that, but am I fine with what it's at and, you know? Yes, I, I think they've done a nice job with what they've done.
That's all, that's, that's all we could ask for. That's, that, that makes a lot of sense. So thank you for that clarification. So. Yeah. And Jim, do you think the ma- we should present the massing model and take turns and twist with it that we submitted?
I don't know. Let me think about that. I, I, I don't know. I, it was interesting for me to see it. Um, I almost wanted to say no to you. But everybody, you know, the board already has it, so. You know, it's, it's, it's out of the bag, basically.
Well, yeah, but.
And it is a good vehicle, basically, for people to see and understand how the neighbors' buildings. Basically work within this context of particularly in height and the like.
That's right, up on Crescent Hill.
Yeah, yeah. Cause they're sitting higher than this thing. Most of them are. Um, sitting higher than this building. Just because of the grading situation.
Okay.
Alright, I don't think we can do anything else here.
No, I think it's, I, I appreciate you guys taking another meeting. So thank you and I, and I think, uh. I think we're ready to go for Monday. Jim Emmanuel, you're available, right?
Oh, is this tomorrow night?
Yeah.
I didn't have it on my calendar, but I think. I should be able to.
Go on Zoom.
What time are we on? I didn't even look at.
I think it's first on.
You're, you're first up, so you don't have to wait until eleven o'clock.
That's seven o'clock. It's on Zoom, Jim. It's on the calendar, town calendar.
Okay, maybe Brian, just send me the link like you did before, if you don't mind.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll do that right now. Alright guys, thank you.
Alright.
Thanks guys.
Appreciate it.
And I'm gonna close this meeting at, um. Six fourteen, subcommittee closes this meeting on Crescent Street. Um, on the Crescent Street project. I thank everybody for, uh, the work done. Thank you, Jim. Uh, as well. And so I'm gonna close the meeting, um, at this point. See you all tomorrow night.